Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael O'Reilly. I'm the chairman of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It is June the 3rd? July 1st? Wait a minute. It is July 1st and it is 7:00 PM. Welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. Recording has started. I'm going to take attendance, starting from my right. Dominic Venetia, present.
Ryan Condon, present.
Wesland here.
Lupo here.
Rick Schultz, town planner, present.
And we have Donna online and Sarah online, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I would like to read a notice. Please note that this meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting in compliance with the governor's executive orders. All participants may attend remotely or in person. This meeting is being conducted in real time, is open to the public, and any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. Copy of the agenda and any related material have been posted to the Town of Monroe website for public inspection. This meeting is being recorded while we ask those attending remotely to mute your microphone unless recognized to speak. Anything you say, do, or do is displayed on your screen and may become part of the recording, which will be posted on the Town's website within seven days. Use of the chat features prohibited, and Malachi considered during the meeting at any time. Please join me and stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as a court. At this time, I'd like to ask the public if there is anyone that would like to participate in our general public participation period. Are there any members of the public that would like to participate in our general public participation period? If not, we'll move along. I'd like to bring up item number 11. I believe we have representation. Amanda?
Francisco Gom is remote.
I'm standing. Francisco, are you with us? Doesn't look like it.
I just texted a Mr. Chairman to.
Alright, then we're gonna have to go on. So we're gonna start with the public hearing, our first public hearing, number four, SCP 2020-06, file number 1631A, 5 Victoria Drive. This is a continuation from 6/321 with a letter granting a 65-day extension that was received 6/921.
Mr. Chairman, we just received a request for the commission to continue this to the January 22nd meeting.
Will it continue this to the January?
July 22nd. Chairman threw me off when he said June.
Okay. Then, moving along to number five on the agenda, second public hearing, RAA 2021-05, file number 1019E. This is a text change that is being brought by the Town. Do we have? This is...
It's a continuation.
Yeah, we continue to, and essentially, the only issue that was remaining was the design standards for the temporary signs, and that's on page nine. Staff is recommending up to two portable signs may be permitted for an individual business or establishment, and the zoning enforcement officer shall determine the number and location. Right now, Mr. Chairman, it's limited to one. I think the consensus was that two was fine, and that the commission felt comfortable with the zoning enforcement officer determining the location and the number, because there are situations where you have a retailer facing the main road, and there's no need for two. This essentially is for the retailers that are set back and the ones that have sidewalk sales that we know happen from time to time. So that was the remaining issue.
I'm not... What was the duration and the times?
Yeah, it was for no more than 30 days.
At one time, so... How many times can they do it?
Right now, it's 24/7 under the executive order, which has essentially will be ended.
He means how many times a year?
Yeah, twice.
Twice a year.
Just a year.
Thirty days, twice a year. Okay. Thank you.
Actually, before we go on, I'd like to seat an alternate.
So Nicole would be up. Dom was seated in April, so...
Alright. Mr. Bruno's... And I believe Leon will be here, so we can hold on open.
Do we temporarily want to see Dominic and Leon's spot?
No. They fill the position until the regular shows up.
Alright, so then, are we gonna close this?
We have to open it up to the public?
That's right.
Yeah, you need to open it.
Alright, so then, on public hearing number five, text amendment proposed by the Town of Monroe. Is anyone here from the public that has any comments or questions on this text amendment? Once again, is there anyone here from the public that has any comments on this text amendment? If not, then we'll move along. Does anyone here have any questions? Okay. Are you all ready to close this hearing?
Yes.
Alright, then we will close. RAA 2021-05, file number 1019E. Moving on. Public hearing, number six on the agenda, SCP 2021-07, file number 1632A, 1545 Monroe Turnpike. This is a new public hearing. Do you want to read the posting?
Yes. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held July 1st, 2021. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, July 1st, 2021, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter via hybrid go-to meeting, and with access by phone. And limited in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall Council Chamber, 7 Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, concerning the following. SCP 2021-07, file number 1632A, 1545 Monroe Turnpike. Petition for a special exception use property located at 1545 Monroe Turnpike as a vehicle storage facility. Stevenson Properties LLC by Kimball Investments LLC, Jill Kimball, manager, applicant, lumberyard LLC by John E. Ramsey, president, 1545 Monroe Turnpike, accessories map 150 Lot 1. Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, June 23rd, 21, and Wednesday, June 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Ryan. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, report from Matt Vertoli, Sanitarion. Two, SCP application by Larry Edwards. Number three, town planners' comments. Four, response to town engineers' comments by Jason Edwards. Number five, SCP submission revised by Jason Edwards. Exhibit number six, conservation comments, Conservation Commission comments. Exhibit number seven, return receipt certified mailings. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant, who do we have?
John Kimball. Alright, John Kimball. I'm actually, so, for Kimball Family Investments, which is my wife and my son and daughter. And we're here with Larry Edwards and Ian Edwards.
Let the record show that Commissioner Ambrosi has arrived. Excuse me.
And just a little housekeeping to get out of the way before we start, just to keep complete transparency in government and for total disclosure. You know, I just felt that it appropriate that, to let people know that we had done business with, you know, one of the companies that Dominic Venetia was involved in 15, 20 years, but a long time ago, and I don't think there's any conflict of interest related to that, but I just wanted to disclose it, and also, the family business. Commissioner Ambrosi helped us in acquisition of a piece of property several years ago through myself, and we don't have an ongoing relationship, but I just want, you know, just, again, to keep everything open in the public eye, we felt that it be appropriate that we just disclose that.
Do the commissioners feel the need to recluse themselves from these hearings?
No.
Okay.
And we don't either. I just wanted to disclose it. Thank you. And I'll let Larry take over.
I'm gonna let my technical expert get this... I have PDFs of the plans that I would like to bring up, and I just don't know how to do that, this mess we've got going on here.
Okay. That came back after New York. I picked up my in-laws today. I've got freaking traffic, man, so bad. I picked them up before, I just got back now. Where do I have it?
You didn't even notice the plastic's missing.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Smashing my B on that day.
I saw you out there. Wide open now. I told him it's not.
Nice. Now we can hit Bruno if he starts getting one.
No, he's not coming.
It's local user, the password, Rick.
Monroe?
No, just local user.
Oh, local user, okay.
Yeah, that's just the password.
Not for the record.
There we go. Well, that's what it should be. Is it... You don't have Cat Lock on or anything, right?
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
The password is...
It does.
Hi, everyone. Francisco joining now. I'm sorry, I was having issues logging in. I'm not quite sure why, but I am here now.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring you up next. Francisco.
Your mic's up. Turn it up to the existing commission panel. For the record, my name is Larry Edwards, professional engineer. Offices 227 Step 0 in Easton. We were before you during the, earlier this year, for the master plan of this Stevenson number site. And that was approved as, with zone change, text amendment. And we are now coming in with our first of the parcels that was part of that master plan, this being parcel number three. And this is going to be used by a local, I believe he actually lives in Monroe, and his trucking company there proposing to utilize this parcel. And we'll utilize, I want you to go to the rendering, probably. And they're gonna utilize the existing facilities that are there, primarily the existing building, this building here, which is, was the original maintenance facility for the Stevenson number company, which is still in very good condition. It's basically a maintenance garage, which they are proposing to use to maintain their truck fleet. And they are also proposing to utilize the long building here as a facility for parking their trucks in that particular building. So the trucks will all be parked inside the building. The maintenance facility will be used in the back. The other two buildings on the site are not included. The existing building to the, this building here was originally coal storage. That building will be maintained as that. It's still used, so no septic systems required. And the fourth building, which is the building, which was the original offices and showroom, the particular client has no intention of doing anything with that building at this time. We understand that anything that's done on either one of these buildings would require to come back to this commission. But really, this is interesting, this operation moving in here, and those two buildings would be the buildings that he's gonna use for his. There is a, there's some restroom facilities in the maintenance building and the existing septic system, which will handle that use of the building. We have proposed parking areas in accordance with the regulations, which are shown in the front of this building, the maintenance building. And just to keep, to show compliance, you've shown a small parking area here, which would be the required number of spaces for the jointing of it to be used for basic storage and where else. The access will be off of the proposed access driveway, which was included as part of the master plan, and we are basically proposing that will be as part of the, this process, town engineers already computed the bond amount for that, which would be posted at the same time as the, this site, if the commission does approve it. That was a commission to town engineer's questions. We are, I think, we already have an application into the commission for the adjoining lot, which would be Lot 2, which they've just submitted, which is gonna also be a separate application the commission will review independently of the master plan. We are proposing green areas, green areas are the areas that will be landscaped as part of this application. There's a landscape plan that goes along with that. That's, that will be part of this application, will be part of the, 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 the rest of the site will basically remain as existing. The, not proposing to do any additional approvals, except that it will be reviewed in terms of the buildings and so forth, different, the, 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 needed for the use, as we propose. And that will be part of the building. The, what is it, the, 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 the overall site?
Excuse me, can I interject for one moment, please? When the commissioners are turning their maps, that's drowning out the presentation speaker. Just be mindful of the microphones that are up on the chambers, and if the presenter could please speak into the microphone by their computer.
It's on. Donna can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. It's just that when there's maps being, pages being turned, the microphones on the dais pick it up louder than the presenter speaking.
If the presenter could just speak into the microphone, I think that will help.
And then, Rick, can you click on one of those, so we can get maybe a full screen? The thing at the top of the pad, I think? I think, I think the one on the left, share your screen. HDMI? Maybe it'll go away?
Now, do it.
No, it's not gonna do it.
No. Yeah, 'cause I think it's...
We can get rid of Donna.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, of this room thing. I think that's on the pad, right? You wanna try it, Ryan?
We're all used to working on the remote, and we could fuck things one way or the other. We had access to it. Yeah. So we're ready to continue. I'll try to speak into the microphone. Basically, I woke this up. This is the plan that was approved as part of the master plan of development, and I just wanted to turn this up to show any contrast where it is. Doesn't sound good. The, this is one of the four lots that was created and approved by both the staff and the town attorney in terms of creating the four parcels. There was originally four parcels, but a lot lighter vision was done, that was basically created these lots. This is the same lots that you approved as part of the master plan, but it was reviewed and signed off by the town attorney and recorded. So this map has been recorded, so this parcel will be one of those four parcels which are part of that master plan.
Can everyone on the phone, please mute? It's caller number three is also...
Yeah, Donna can unmute.
Everyone has to be muted.
She got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The town engineer had some comments that came in to us on Monday, I believe, and he made those changes. They were basically technical items that he wanted in terms of definitions and so forth, and those changes are reflected in the, I think, the ones, the plans that you are seeing now, so those changes were submitted yesterday. So we've addressed all his comments. The health department had no comments because there's existing septic system for the house, for the building that we're utilizing. Weapons have signed off on the master plan, and we are proposing no modifications to the site that would be within 100 feet of the weapons. The only modifications that we are doing are drainage down in the front portion of the site, which again, is the town engineer's. Down in this area, proposing to install a series of catch basins. Sorry, just can't get that to go. In the front of the property, along the proposed access way, we're putting a couple of catch basins in that will go into a separated unit, and that will discharge into the main drainage system that's runs through Stevenson site. So that's all part of what would be included as improvements for this application. And again, the landscaping and curving along the limits, the lower or northern limits of, of the site, which will make sure that all gets into that storm drainage system and pass through the particle separator before going back into, you know, the site storm drainage. So those improvements were done, were proposed, and again, the only other thing would be we're doing, we'll do park and spreading for the parking areas and the improvements, whatever improvements are to the buildings are gonna be necessary. Again, the building for the maintenance and the shed for the storage of the trucks. And I think that's about, it's kind of the application, pretty straightforward, and I'll, I'm sure he has some things he wants to go and explain.
Larry, John Kimball, 262 West Portwood, Easton, for record. So, you know, I think we've handled the engineering, a couple things. Let me just hit some high points on what we're doing here. In order to, we started this with the master plan. Part of what will happen is we'll post the bond, which will cover the landscaping improvements along Route 111. So that work gets done in conjunction with this application, so that bonding Scott recommended should be a condition of approval for this application, that you require us to post the bond for the landscaping, that Scott's already set the bond amount for the master plan landscaping along Route 111. Things that don't jump out at you, you're, you know, there's a faux wrought iron, you know, fence that, Mr. Swall, Mr. Swall is here in the audience with us tonight, he's a Monroe resident and very excited to move his business here. It's got like a faux, you know, wrought iron fence with, with gates to kind of keep control of people going and driving around the property, so the cul-de-sac. Basically, at those three entrances, at the end of the cul-de-sac, those will, all three be gated. We'll be putting in all, like, what was, very large street trees along the cul-de-sac. We're reducing the impervious area on the site. The Town's goal for reduction in impervious area is 2%. We're getting over 6% reduction on impervious area by adding these green spaces on the site. We're also adding a more technic storm chamber, which cleans the storm water before it leaves the site. So we're collecting the storm water in catch basins, which we're installing, and then cleaning the storm water. So you're allowed actually to do either or, reduction in impervious surface or cleaning the storm water. We've gone and done both. As far as the, the overall site, the kind of the building for, the retail building, we're working with Mr. Swall to get tenants for that building, and until we have a specific tenant, it didn't make sense for us to do all kinds of design... We've gone and done both. As far as the, the overall site, the, the kind of the building for the retail building, we're working with Mr. Swalle to get tenants for that building. And until we have a specific tenant, it didn't make sense for us to do all kinds of designs with a fictitious tenant. So the plan here is to get the business going in the, in the, the other three structures. They're all striped, all the parking is set up, there's adequate parking for everything that's there. And then work on getting, securing a tenant. And, you know, we've talked to a few different tenants, but we have nothing solidified yet. And as soon as there's something solidified, we'll bring a plan back in front of the commission for approval for that. The landscape plan, is that here? One of the things I wanted to point out on the landscape plan was the, it's hard to use this in speaking in the microphone, but the only vantage point, you know, I've actually walked up and down 111 in that area from the other side of the street. And the only vantage point that you can really see into the property, or the largest vantage point that you can see into the property is literally right here, between the middle of the building and about, you know, 40 feet away from the, from the middle of the building. And so we're proposing large evergreen landscape plantings right along that area. And that will basically have the effect of making so that between the building and the topography and the rest of the natural landscape that's there, we have pretty much adequate screening right along the Route 111 side of the property. The other landscape that we're doing is basically along the edge of this building. And that is big, is so we can, we can push the traffic that comes in around the back of the building for parking. So if people don't, it doesn't invite people to the, to the, to the front of that building from a parking standpoint. And that dovetails with this site plan that you haven't seen yet because that plan has a parking field out front. They'll come up and turn off into their own parking field also. So that's, and then we have a pedestrian walkway, part of the master plan that enables people to cross, cross safely over in this area. As far as the overall plan, the lot line revision plan, can you just pull that up one more time? Do you have the record, Matt? I have the lot line revision plan. Okay, so again, so what was unique about this property is the property was acquired by the owners of Stevenson Lumber over a 30-year period back in the 50s, prior to zoning and, you know. But, so basically what, what they did is originally they started the lumberyard on the other side of the street. Then they moved it over to this side of the street, to this building, and, and acquired that property. Then they went and acquired a second piece of property and then a third piece of property. And then later in the 80s, they acquired this, which was a product of a subdivision of another property up on Pine Tree Estates or something like that off of Old Zor Road. We, after getting the, the zone text amendment and zone change approval, submitted to staff a lot line revision plan, which basically made each of the lots 100% conforming as far as lot area coverage, minimum square, all the things that were required. And we submitted a plan to the town and it was reviewed by staff. Then it was bounced to the town attorney because it was a very complicated legal issue. And the town attorney approved the filing of this map and we filed this map with the land record. So these lots that you see right here, the red dots are the pin locations for, you know, for the surveyor. But these lots currently exist as, as of now for this property. So there's basically this lot, which is 421 Old Zor. This is 1545 Monroe Turnpike, 1565 Monroe Turnpike, and 1585 Monroe Turnpike. Each, each lot has one or more buildings on it. And, and then there are access easements to get into the property to accomplish access to the overall property. So, you know, the master planning process was a very useful process and we worked out a lot of things in terms of access drainage and utilities. All of the utilities, with the exception of something that runs along the woods line in the parking lot, this is the only overhead line that, that still exists on the property. All of the other overhead utility lines have already been removed and all the utilities will be brought underground. So, you know, this is a process that's been evolving. And we're very excited to have George here with us to occupy the property. We have another exciting application we've already filed and another one to come right behind it. So, you know, it, the good news is all the work that we've been doing for the last two years to kind of iron out the, the issues with this site plan have really come to fruition for us and the town. I think we're, we're really excited to be here. And now, I guess if we don't have any other engineering issues, we open it up to any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimball. I'll start with the commissioners, start on my right.
I have no question.
I have a couple of questions. The cold storage, what's planned to be stored in that?
I don't know, so I'm sorry.
I don't know, whoever can answer.
Hi, John Kimball, professor. Right now, potentially trucks that are part of the business of the applicant.
All right, thanks. And then the, there's no new paving happening? It's just striping the paving that's adequate there?
Well, the only new pa, the new paving that's happening is we're putting in new, you know, the new main driveway and the new islands. But he's only going to be doing patching or repairing. The existing asphalt surface is in relatively good shape, so, but yeah, no, no, we're not planning. Actually, this, it's a reduction of pavement, so we're actually pulling out pavement.
That's it, I'm happy to see this moving.
I just have a couple of questions. The maintenance buildings, is there drainage in the maintenance buildings?
No, there used to be a floor drain in the maintenance building. The environmental, we did, in the last two years, we've done substantial environmental mediation of property. We actually removed half the floor in the maintenance building and pulled out the dirt in the floor. And then.
Sealed it.
Removed and sealed any drainage. So there's no more internal drains in the building.
Oil and anti-prestorage, because you're going to do maintenance, right? You have anything on the plan that you're going to put in here?
He would, he would, he would have to meet whatever the state laws are on appropriate handling of materials. They would be, it would be indoors, obviously. And he, he'd put it in approved containers and follow the state law relative to storage of any materials for maintenance.
I think that's about it. And then so, they get to store any vehicles outside?
Oh, yeah. The, the, there are vehicles stored right now, it's listed as underneath, oh, I don't know, it's plain word. Easy to see one. In that big overhang building that used to be the lumber shed. So right now, they're planning on parking in this area right here.
That screened pretty good?
It screened, when, when we looked at the site, with the exception of this area right here, it was very well, you know, it was very well screened from the road. As soon as we added this, infill this area right here, we believe that it would be adequate. The whole site will be pretty well screened from the road.
This is basically trucks, right?
Yes.
So there's not going to be any big excavators?
It's not excavators, it's not construction equipment. Trucks, dump trucks and/or the dump trailer.
Okay, that's all I have.
Sounds like to me is the, the septic system that's on site now has been dormant for quite some time, which can actually be a good thing in many cases. Has the system been tested?
Well, the system hasn't been tested, but we did, what the health code requires is that we guarantee that there's an area for reserve. And that we have done. So if a new system does have to be put in, there is adequate area designated for that. As far as the existing system, it's better that it's set. But you're not going to have a large usage. You know, the truck drivers are going to be gone. You're going to have mornings probably if they come in and use the bathrooms. Besides that, you're going to have a number of maintenance people, which is going to be probably maybe two or three or something like that, I would imagine.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. The, the storm water containment system that you discussed with the water treatment, a cleaning system, can, can you elaborate on that? How does that actually clean the storm water?
It's, uh, it's, it's an approved, it's a hydrodynamic cyclone separator. And it's basically what it does is you take, what they treat is you treat the first one inch of runoff. That's what the regulations go and what these are designed for. So you basically divert the initial flow into these separator units. They basically do, they're swirled, so they put it through a cyclone and it goes around. It, the heavy stuff settles to the bottom and it pushes out the other contaminants to the side and they fall down. So they're very, very effective and they meet the 89% removal that is required by the code. And on a site like this, you know, otherwise we would be putting in storm basins, which would serve the same purpose. But for retrofitted sites like this, obviously it's not as easy to be able to put the detention basins in or water quality basins. So what you do is treat the runoff with the separator and then we reduce the impervious area so that we make up for the tension that we would need if we were going to do the formal basis. So that's the way, and this was going over with the town engineer in the early stages. And this is what he recommended for us to use as, now they have to be maintained, you know, they're going to be cleaned out.
That's what I was going to ask, what's, what's the frequency?
Uh, it all depends what the conditions of the site are. But that's something, we'll look at the manufacturer's recommendations and it's going to have to be monitored.
As needed, possibly.
As needed.
Yeah.
But obviously, you know, you have a site like this, it's not going to have a lot, a lot of sand and salt put on it because most of it, you know, is, is not going to need it. So that's really what contributes the most to it in litter, which again, this isn't going to have a high litter.
It's a concern of mine with the topography that's on, on the site now and the local waterways nearby. So, you know, the nature of the vehicles being stored.
And basically what we're doing is we're doing the same concept for each of the development parcels. So we're, we're going to be putting individual units in for each one. And those will be maintained by, obviously this one will be maintained by the owners of this parcel. And then the next one and two are going to be one joint one because just the way it works on that, those two sites. There'll be one for those two sites which we operated.
And the plan is to repair the existing parking lot, to remove any pervious areas?
Remove the pervious areas and then as, overall this, it's state, it's a good stable facility. There's cracks and stuff in it, but it'll function well and there's no need to do any additional pavement in those areas.
Final question is the lighting, what, what's going to be the plan for?
Uh, the lighting is on, we show it on the plan. It's, for the most part, they are on in buildings. Overall lighting, but there's lighting that will, of course, I can do a lot better. There's lights shown on the plan, which will be building mounted. And I think there's some along this building too. So they'll be all wall mounted fixtures.
Okay.
And zero, you know, down, down lighted, zero sky.
That's all I have, thanks.
If it lets you.
Are you Rick? No?
Cancel. There we go.
Now we're safe. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate the put together slides and all the detail you included. I have a few questions. The business coming in, what hours of operation will it be?
Seven to three, seven to four.
Okay.
Sorry, John Kimball, for the record, seven to three to seven to four.
Okay. Thank you. I went onto the website, I know it's a 24-hour service. I wasn't sure if that was going to be at this location or just at the other location you have.
We do work nights sometimes, yeah.
Okay, so there is an, there is a potential for there to be. Yeah.
Yeah, seven to three, seven at night to three in the morning sometimes. You got to state your name on there.
Three in the morning? Okay. Thank you, George.
Your address, teacher.
Your address?
Your home address.
66 Flinford Road.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I went online just to kind of research a little bit and it says it's a 24/7 company where you rent out the dump trucks and there's on call. So is there a potential for there to be overnight traffic down there?
Oh, no.
Trucks going?
Once they go, they're gone. And when they come back, they come back. I mean, if we have, we do go out with utilities, so something may break, we may send a guy out. But he, once he goes, he's gone. We're not going to be in and out dumping material and stuff like that down there.
Okay, all right.
So they're going to come in, they'll get the truck and they'll go.
So will there be any backup noises at night? I'm just thinking of the local neighbors, if they're going to hear anything down there? No, okay. Will there be any material, speaking of dumping, will there be any material stored on site?
No, if I was going to go that way, I'd come in and get the approval for that.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question had to do with Building D, similar to, I think it was Ryan's question, I'm not sure. I'm familiar with that building and I know that the side facing 111 is wide open.
Which one's B?
The long shed that has no sides to it.
Yeah.
Any, any opportunity to put some, some doors on that side, something? Because when you come down the 111 hill, you see straight down there. There is no, there's nothing blocking it, there's no barrier. I know right from the entrance where John showed, that's pretty well maintained. You really can't see back there, it's more coming down the 111 hill. That, that building's wide open.
The one right below, or are you thinking about the one that's in the back to go?
The shed.
Shed. Sorry, you can't see down. Yes, I'm sorry, John Kimball, for the record. Yeah, part of the reason why we put those red plantings in there was to kind of work out blocking that.
Yeah.
You know, George can, you know, the place has not been really well maintained over the last 12 years. So big vines have grown up into the trees and they've strangled some of the evergreens that have been there. George's people do, you know, kind of get in, cut back the vines, reinvigorate some of the evergreens. His goal is basically to have it so that you're not looking into that site and seeing everything that's going on. So, but we have to be cognizant of the fact that, that a good piece of that is state.
Right.
It's state highway right of way. But doesn't, you know, and, and I've actually walked up and down there and there's a lot of really good small evergreen growth. As long as we can, you know, do some maintenance in there and keep, you know, cut down the weeds and let those things flourish, we should have a pretty good planted buffer. The benefit of having the side, the shed open side on both sides is we don't have, he doesn't have to back the trucks up. He can pull the truck in and then pull it straight out without having a backup alarm that they hear from residential neighborhood anywhere around. Most of his trucks overnight will go out to a paving job and they're there all night. They don't come back in and, and, and back and forth. They'll go out and go to the asphalt plant and then go to the DOT and wait in those big long lines. We all see them or stuck on the highway behind the trucks. That's pretty much what happens.
I've been there. All right. And the building in front, which is the cold storage and then the building that's going to be the maintenance building, is there going to be any improvements to the outside of the building since it hasn't really been touched in 15, 20?
Once they get it settled.
30 years?
Redo the roof.
Okay. Okay. All right. Those are all my questions, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Your commissioner, Lou. I have no questions. Rick, Steph has any?
Yes, I just want to go over my comments. First and foremost, I want to clarify, the application is, is for a commercial vehicle facility. the application is, is for a commercial vehicle facility, similar to the last mile on Victoria. Okay, this is not a contractor's storage yard, which is a prohibited use. All right? So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Uh, the application, uh, submitted is complete. This application was not referred to the ARB board as no external changes to the buildings are, are proposed. As George indicated, he will be painting and fixing the roof. Parcel currently contains three buildings as identified by Mr. Kimball, B, C, and D, and are served by an existing well and septic system. Adequate onsite parking has been provided for the intended use by providing 27 total outdoor spaces and covered spaces within buildings B and D. Dumpster or outdoor storage areas are being proposed as been, as has been stated at the hearing. The parcel's not located within a watershed or floodplain area. Lighting will be dark sky compliant. And as Mr. Kimball indicated, landscaping will be installed along the Monroe Turnpike in accordance with the master plan. And, uh, as Mr. Kimball indicated, the future private cul-de-sac will be constructed prior to the occupancy of parcel two. That application is coming in shortly. So you are going to be seeing substantial improvements, uh, to the property. This is the first one. Uh, they're going to be using the existing entrance, but the, uh, cul-de-sac is going to be a major improvement that also has landscaping and with the supplemental should improve the aesthetics tremendously. Uh, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to go to the public as this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would have any comment on the application, SCP 2021-07? That's before the commission now. Either for, against, or neutral. Any members of the public, once again, that would like to comment on this application before the commission? If not, um, back to you. Would you like us to go with tonight?
John Kimball for the record. Um, I did want to state that we, I don't think we had touched on it, that we did, um, apply for and receive DOT approval, um, and submitted traffic report with our application indicating that, that this would have no adverse impact on the traffic. And we, uh, we have, uh, an approval in place for, uh, improving, uh, both entrance driveways to the site and we've met all the DOT requirements for those entrances.
Okay. So you don't plan to have a dumpster there at all?
No, there's a dumpster, uh, it's a screened dumpster way to the back of the property. It's, uh, maybe that's it right there. So, yeah, we do, I correct, uh, Rick, but yeah, it's a screened, in accordance with the normal process, there will be dumpster.
Hey, I thought that was an exist, is that an existing one?
Well, it, it may be there, but that's where we're going to put it, so.
I stand corrected, that's the existing one.
No, because I heard you say there would be one.
The intent was not to build a, a big one that would, uh, be a part of the front.
It's on the plan here? It's on the, is that on the plan?
Yeah, it, it's on the plan. Yes, it is.
It, it's a small.
Yeah.
It's a small demarcation.
That's all I had.
Okay, would you like us to close the hearing?
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it and we're looking forward to having Mr. Swally, uh, become a member of the Stevens' Flex Park.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimball. Any other questions? Are we okay with closing the hearing?
Yeah, I'd say close it.
Yes. Well, good. Closing the hearing. Karen closed. That ends.
The Karen portion of tonight's meeting. And Mr. Chairman, Francisco is available now.
Does it like to sit down to 9:11? That's the P O C D online implementation discussion. Francisco, I believe you're on the line. Oh, there's a new, um, implementation plan for the P O C D. And it's going to go to the way really?
We're done with it.
This is the most important part. Where'd that come from? I didn't see that. We talked about it.
They emailed it to us. We're supposed to read it before the meeting.
When did you get it? Yesterday?
Uh, earlier in the week, last week.
No, I don't think that, early, early, I saw it.
Couple hours ago.
I know.
Yeah.
Francisco?
He's not here again.
Uh, he texted me, he's having to.
There he is.
There he is.
Okay. Can't hear him though. Rick.
You guys able to bring, you guys able to bring John?
Making him the presenter?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And Donna, can you make him the presenter?
Uh, can you guys?
Are you, are you frozen, Francisco?
Okay, uh, what I need, what I need you guys to do is to bring up the webpage on your computer. Because.
Shut it down.
Just shut it down.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Did anyone, um, I, I have hard copies here.
Well, let's have those.
I'll be hard copy.
All right. Is it possible for you guys to bring up the page from your computer?
No, it's really, really supposed to be online.
Yeah, it is online, yeah.
The idea of it is to be online, so it's available to everyone.
If you hold on one moment, I'll bring it up on the website.
Yeah, if you could do that, Donna.
Who's this for? He emailed it to us on Tuesday.
This week. Oh, yeah. A P O C D implementation.
I think he's just going to go over it.
It's everything that's in there. Does, does everyone have their P O C D?
I do, yes.
It's everything in the back. It's just the implementation of it.
That's fine, I read the sharing yesterday.
You know the back pages, everyone?
Yeah.
Right here, this part, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you folks, can you folks hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, and we're, we're, we're reviewing the implementation schedule in the back of the P O C D. Most of the commissioners.
Okay, now, let me ask you this. Rick, I, I sent you the link to the webpage. Can you bring it up from your computer online so we can all see the online version?
Yeah, Donna's is doing that as we speak, but you can continue.
Good. So let me give you a brief introduction and, and thanks again for accommodating us on the agenda. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having some technical difficulties here. I can't get my laptop to log on, so I'm using my phone. Uh, and, and as long as we can bring up the webpage on, on your end, I think we can have a productive meeting. Uh, the, what we, what we did was we took the implementation summary that's at the back of the plan and we put it online in an interactive format that is updatable. And the idea is that this is one of the ways we can keep the plan from sitting on the shelf. It's like making it, all of the recommendations more accessible, visible, and making the, the, the planning recommendations as transparent as possible. And, and I see you're, you're bringing up something on the screen now. I'm hoping that's it.
This is the actual plan. Yeah, that's the plan, yeah.
The plan. All right.
Well, we can, we can make, yeah, Francisco, we can make do. Francisco, we'll just go through the implementation part.
All right, do, let me ask you really quick though. Uh, do you have a web browser connection? That you could show?
They do not. I, I'm on my computer at home.
Oh.
Creation and development. I don't have the.
I know.
So, so you are sharing your screen?
I am.
Okay, can, can you open a web browser and I'll give you the URL? It's pretty simple and you could pull up the webpage?
Sure.
Donna, I just emailed it to you. If you want to check your email.
Yeah, I was just going to do that. You did, right?
Yeah, I just did it.
Yeah, I, I apologize for these technical challenges. It should have been a lot easier.
Um, I can't do it that way. You sent it to my work email, so.
Oh, yeah. If, if you just open a, a web browser, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
I'll give it to you.
Donna, I have it.
All right, hold on, hold please.
Do you want me to send it to you?
Okay.
All right, it is W W W.
You want to email or?
F H I plan, all one word, and survey, all, all one word. Okay? So you have W W W dot F H I dot plan survey.
Uh.
Forward slash.
F I.
Dot com, dot com, forward slash Monroe P O C D, all one word.
Boy. Okay, I apologize. I have W W W dot F H I P L A N A N D survey.
Okay, okay. Uh, P L A N S U R V E Y.
Yeah.
F H I plan survey altogether, dot com.
Oh, plan survey.
Yeah. Dot com. And then the forward slash, the forward leaning slash, not the backslash. Monroe P O C D.
Dot com?
Dot com, yep. Yeah, that, that, uh, the dot com should go right after survey and before the forward slash.
And before this, I apologize.
That's okay. We'll get it, we'll get it. This, this, this should, would have been a lot easier if, if I'd been able to get, get it to launch.
It's all right.
Is it not coming up?
It isn't. Can you see?
Can, can you replace the W W W with H T T P S? Colon, forward slash, forward slash? Uh, not a semicolon, but a full colon.
I apologize, sorry.
And we'll get it, we'll get it. Well, that's, that's URL. I'm not, I'm not sure why it's not coming up on your screen.
F H I P plan survey.
All right, well, let me do this. Let me describe what we have so that we don't torture people anymore with our technical challenges. Uh, if, if you get rid of that hand, you, you should get rid of that hand.
Yeah, I just added it.
Yeah.
Let's see, maybe this is it? It looks like it can, nope, okay.
Okay, so, like, no problem. So let me cut to the chase and save everyone some more time here. Uh, we have developed an online version of the implementation summary that's at the back of the plan. Uh, there is no new information here. There are no new recommendations. There are no new strategies, no new goals. It's all of the same content. Uh, but what we have done is we put it together into a webpage that is currently printed on our pest website that is not low end for whatever reason. Uh, that, that page is searchable. There is a, a search box, so you can type any term and it will bring up all of the strategies and action items that are relevant to that term. You can sort it. It's organized by our plan themes, uh, you know, transport, economic development, housing, et cetera. So it's all of the same information that's in the implementation. It's just in a, a more usable, digital, searchable format. And the idea is that if, if this format is acceptable to you, that we can migrate it over to the town's, uh, planning and zoning webpage and have it up on a unique page there. And as you make progress towards, uh, the plan's recommendations, its, its strategies and action items, you can update that, that implementation, uh, summary with notes about prog, progress. Uh, so it, it's really one, and it's another attempt to make the information user-friendly, more accessible to people and to help ensure that it doesn't sit, the plan doesn't sit on a shelf. I distributed a link to Rick, uh, if we can use that link, I, it should be able to work for everyone. I can, I can actually pull it up on my phone now and see it. Um, unfortunately, I just don't have the capability of sharing from my phone, I don't think. Are, are, are there, are there any questions?
No, thank you, Francisco. I looked at it at home and it's great. I really like it. Um, why don't we give the other commissioners some time to look at it and we'll get back to you if we have any questions.
Yeah, we're happy to, to make, you know, any revisions necessary to the way it's organized or, or formatted.
That's pretty straightforward. No, we lost your audio, Francisco.
And so we wouldn't be changing any of our action items, strategies, or goals.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your patience. I'm, I'm sorry about the technical challenges.
That's okay. It happens, Francisco. All right, thank you. We'll get back, I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
All right, let's move on to deliberations and determinations. First is the pending minutes. We all have before us the June 30, 2021 Plan and Zoning Commission minutes. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Drafted.
I'll make a motion.
A motion, I need a second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
Nope.
If not, then we'll call the roll, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Correlli, yes.
Westland, yes.
Lupro, yes.
Thank you. Moving on, pending applications, deliberations, and determinations. Uh, we have, um, R A A 2021 dash oh one, Brown 1016E, mixed design district and special development district. I believe you have that for you. We've seen this quite, for quite some time now. We've been back and forth with it. There's been many changes made, uh, to it. And I'd like to open the discussion, I believe, the five regular members are seated on this right, Rick.
Since Bruno's not here, does that mean Nicole's seated? She was at every meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you would have to indicate for the record that you feel comfortable.
I was at every meeting and feel comfortable.
With the deliberation.
And it'll be five of us. All right, so, um, where do you want to start?
Well, actually, Mr. Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, I prepared a staff report that has the proposed important text proposals and then I have the staff recommendations. I'd like to start with that.
That's.
And that'll get us into the discussion and then hopefully we can get a consensus on the direction that the commission wants to go. As staff has indicated, this is a useful zoning tool. At, has been used quite successfully in the town of Newtown as reported at our subcommittee meeting and reported to the full commission. In Shelton, when I was there, we have a similar zoning technique called the Plan Development District. So staff is very comfortable with this type of zoning tool, first and foremost. The proposal that is before the commission, which you have the ability to tweak, change, add, delete, is recommending the Main Street Design District overlay for the Route 25 corridor, except for the Village Center. Staff is recommending, suggesting that this be included within all of the Route 8, Route 25 corridor, as well as the Route 111. Now, as you did with the mixed-use regulations, you started at the southern 1/3. So this is your call. Comfort level has to be there. But I believe strolling that this zoning tool can be used quite successfully because it involves a zone change and you can say yes or no. And because of that, I think it's worthy to consider for the entire Route 25 corridor and the commercial corridor of Route 111 and essentially Route 34 Roosevelt Drive as well, too. But I feel comfortable with the 25 and, and commercial 111 corridor. I think one of the biggest, other than that, one of the bigger issues is the minimum of two acres. Staff is suggesting a minimum of one acre with restrictions and that restriction would be submission of a master plan showing the redevelopment of multiple parcels that ultimately will match the two acres or even more. So there are parcels under one acre. We heard it from the property owners that participated at the public hearing. Once again, it's your call. When we did the Plan Development District in Shelton, we started with the two acre. And then ultimately, the parcels that were smaller came up before the commission and the commission amended the regulations. So that's how that went in sequence. So it is your call, but clearly the Village Center has parcels under two acres. So if you want to include that area, you can put a caveat in there that says that you need to show a combined area of at least two acres, showing a master plan for the redevelopment. There's no vacant parcels per se, so it would be a redevelopment effort. So that I'm throwing out for a suggestion. Another big area of discussion is the multifamily 15 acres. And I would suggest to the commission that the multifamily 15 acres have a restriction and identified in our forthcoming Affordable Housing Plan. The Affordable Housing Plan is a mandate. It has to be completed in year 2022. We've already started it. It's in the P O C D. Now we have to identify additional parcels and we already have one, the elderly housing. That's going to be identified. Those are all affordable housing units and will be recognized by the state. Now, in your regulation, for the multifamily, the applicant has agreed to go with the 10% set aside. So it, it is going to be part of the town's affordable housing master list eventually. So alls I'm suggesting to you is that you add wording that makes reference to the Monroe Affordable Housing Plan. It needs to, we, we have to recognize it. It can't be, well, we want to provide for more affordable housing. This plan, you have to show the parcels. And as I indicated without sounding redundant, we, we have the 49-unit elderly housing, so that's going to be shown. All right, that's the overlay provision. The applicant is suggesting that the overlay be all of 25, except for the Village Center. If the commission agrees to that, that will be an overlay. And then you will get individual submissions for the actual zone change and that will be the Special Development District. And we will, there will be a number for each one, just like they did in Newtown. S D D number one, S D D number two. Obviously, what is driving this is the 127 Main Street for the multifamily actually mixed-use. And that parcel exceeds 15 acres and that's why, that's really where the 15 acres came up. The applicant also showed the other parcels on the Route 25 corridor that are 15 acres or more. There's not a lot of them, but there are a couple of parcels as identified. All right, now, the S D D, that's the actual zone change that you'll consider. You can say yes or no. The overlay zone will be on the zoning map. Essentially, we say these are unique areas within the town of Monroe and you can submit for a Special Development District, which is a zone change. And it's got to go through a public hearing and you can say yes or no. The last one that they did in Newtown was the tractor supply. That was in a residential area. And they believe that they had great success with that. Now, with the S D D, the Special Development District, I'm also suggesting that it be expanded to the Route 111. So if you're going to do both of these corridors, you'll do the overlay zone both on 25. It's your call where you want to do it. You may want to skip the village area. But you heard from the property owners that they would like to be included. And you, you should consider including it for the commercial part of 111. For the actual zone change, you have a mixed-use project, a minimum of 15 acres. That would include multifamily and commercial. And once again, in that regulation, it should make reference to the Affordable Housing Plan. We need to make reference to that document because we're, we're showing the state of Connecticut that the town of Monroe is sincere in trying to meet the, the goal. In addition, the applicant has agreed to go with the 10% set aside. We do that with the mixed use. I am also suggesting that you include wording that would include payment to a Affordable Housing Trust Fund as an option.
We don't have an Affordable Housing Trust.
That is correct, just like we did not have an Open Space Trust Fund.
And I don't think the state is, considers that as part of the mandate.
It is not part of the mandate. The city of, of Stanford has it and has used it. They use it for public projects.
Public housing projects.
Public housing projects. So it's worth consideration. I throw it out because it, it is a possibility.
In lieu, yes.
You can either do the 10% set aside if it makes sense for the project or you can do payment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The commission would make that determination, just like you do for a subdivision. The subdivision is 10% goes to the town's open space or in lieu of that, payment in lieu of. It's a, it's a percentage of the value of the property. That goes to the
Yeah, but is that, does that come down to our decision or does that come down to developer?
Comes down, no, the developer would request it and the commission would make a determination, just like you do for the subdivision.
So we don't have to, we don't have to.
You don't have to do it. And not to confuse you, you can do a hybrid, include both.
So then I have that.
Like 5%.
Right, I got all that, yeah.
But that money would be going to a fund. Who would control that fund? The town?
The town would control, just like they do with the Open Space Trust.
Use that money to
The town council would have to authorize the expenditure of that upon recommendation by this commission.
And, but they would use it to build affordable housing or to acquire property and build affordable housing?
Variety, purchase of property to, to build, to expand the elderly housing that we have in town.
A variety.
It all has to be drafted.
Yeah.
Or to upgrade senior housing that we have in town.
Right.
You heard about the senior housing we have in town with our P O C D?
Yeah, no, right, yeah.
It, it needs some upgrades. But those are recognized as affordable housing units in town by the state of Connecticut. So these are all the issues that I want the commission to discuss and then essentially staff needs a consensus on which way to go. I, I think I, I've been hearing that there is a favorable consensus on the zoning technique. And now it's how far you want to go with it. Do you want to keep it as presented, which is 25 corridor, except for the Village Center? And then you have the other components making reference to the Affordable Housing Plan and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
All right, well, let's start with Commissioner Condon.
All right, do you want me to just kind of go through these?
Pick your feelings.
So with staff recommendations, I, I understand, and I think I'm understanding it correctly, that the M D D would be basically opening the door and then the S D D would be letting them in. So I like the idea of allowing it in a larger area because, again, at the end of the day, we can approve this M D D right now and never approve an S D T if it just doesn't work. I mean, it just gives us an option and I see how that could be a good tool and an opportunity. And going back at it later, once we've done it with 20 and then being like, okay, let's go through this whole process again to open it up to 111 or open it up to Stepney, I'm okay with it as this overlay. So I'd be all right expanding it to all of 25 and the Route 111 business area.
And Route 34.
And 34. Because again, it's, for me, it's, it doesn't set anything in stone. It gives us an opportunity to look at plans down that might be great. I, hopefully will be great for the town. So I'm okay with that. With the the affordable housing, yeah, we wanted that to be added to the multi, I wanted that to be added to the multifamily. And I believe solely at the time that they were in favor of allowing that because that is important. We do have that day too. We do have to keep working towards that. I'm very intrigued by the possible Housing Trust Fund. I think that's something that we would have to, I assume, speak to the town attorney regarding and see how they can draft that because that seems like a multi, a lot, a lot of people involved in that one, but.
It may be so detailed that you may want to leave it out during this.
Yeah, but something to consider in the subcommittee later for.
You got to do, there's multiple layers to it.
Yeah, so, but that's definitely something I'd like to look into because as you said, in the P O C D, we heard from, very briefly, we heard from the housing authority and, and they said that it's, you know, they're kind of in a dire situation over there. So this is something that would help benefit them, I think, a lot. So, yeah, I would want to wait on adding it to this, but definitely, whether it's in the subcommittee or through discussion with the town, other departments, trying to get something like that going might be a great idea. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Condon. Commissioner Ambrosi.
Brian hit all of most of mine. Things like I said, you know, this is something that we don't have to approve that, you know, it comes in front of us and we can decide if it works for the town or not. And it doesn't really make a difference where we put it in the town, in the main corridors, on the main quarters. It really doesn't make a difference because we, we have the choice to approve or not approve it. It's not something that is going to work for the town. We don't have to go forward. We don't have to change his own. If you don't change his own, use doesn't come into place. So I basically, I agree with him and then like the thing in lieu of, I mean, that's something that we'd have to work on and see how that's
Yeah.
Because that could be real complicated.
Okay, Commissioner Westland.
Well, I echo that sentiment. I don't have a problem extending this to 34 and 111. As we can oversee everything that happens going forward, I still do have, you know, you know, interest in finding out about the, the traffic implications and municipal fiscal impact of, of future developments. But we can deal with those on a case-by-case basis. I don't like the idea of putting it in the historic district. I think that should be left out for now. And as far as the affordable housing quota, my question directed to staff, how can we make our accessory apartments inclusive in our overall percentage at this point to help boost that number?
The definition of affordable housing, it requires legislative action. It's been sought after since 1990 to include accessory dwelling units, market rate units that fall within that price range. Because every town has them. Monroe doesn't have a lot, but we still have some. Usually it's to trailer parks. You know, the town doesn't have it. Shelton has three and they, they were not included and they should be.
Yeah.
So it's the definition of the affordable housing and it's been asked repeatedly. But as you know now, the legislators have opened the door for the accessory dwelling units. And I think that would be the next step. I will be talking with my Connecticut chapter of American Planning Association group because we, we talked to our state representatives. But clearly, that should be included, just like the granny pods. Remember that was created? The granny pods should be included too, although those would be a little more difficult because those are temporary in nature.
Well, they're all indicative of affordable housing, so they absolutely should be included. That's all.
Commissioner.
All right, I'll go through as well. I agree with doing, adding it to 111 and 34. I'm not opposed to it being in the historic district as long as we have the opportunity to review any changes first. I agree with the minimum one acre. I did hear the local business people ask for that and I would like to give them an opportunity to do something with it. And I am completely intrigued with the Housing Trust Fund as an option. As a social broker by trade, I think it's really important to include this and I think it would support our P O C D. And other than that, I'm good with it.
Okay, then I guess we can direct staff at this point to draw up a draft.
Well, Mike, can we discuss, just because I know Rob's
Discuss more.
Yeah, well, yes, sorry. I mean, Rob was questioning.
Let's go back again, over.
Just one thing, just, just one thing, just, I mean, Rob was discussing the historical district, the Stepney downtown. My question is, now that I'm thinking about it, could this be used as a tool to have somebody come in front of us with the development there and then we're looking at it with the idea that, you know, it is a historical area? We got to get, I think, out of the mindset that, you know, historical is ruins because some of the stuff over there is falling apart. And this might be a good benefit to let these guys develop something that we might not have thought of that still, at the same time, can come in front of us with a plan that fits and works and kind of doesn't completely change the character and what's going on there, but.
Doesn't it still have to go through the historic commission?
No, it's not.
Any change?
Yeah, any, any village is
It's not the historic district.
Well, no, it's not a historic district officially. It is not, it failed.
Oh, exactly.
Buildings that are over 60 years of age.
Yeah.
For any type of alterations.
So it's not historic.
As we talked about the downtown area, this might let us kind of, you know, I, people, people can be creative. We could have stuff come in. I know there's always been rumors of museum, of a museum and different kind of things popping in on there and this might allow that.
You know, not to confuse things, you could do a separate overlay district for that and call it Stepney.
The Stepney Overlay District, yeah.
But I do.
You know, it just, and you'll have different standards for it.
Well, why don't we look into that?
Okay.
And plus it keeps it in the spirit of the historic district.
The historic district.
That's a recognition of a, of a
Basically, because that probably worked a little bit because, you know, when they come in front of you or wherever to see what they can do there, you're going to say, listen, you have to try to meet this kind of design and kind of give them a direction.
Yeah, and Newtown did that. Yeah, and Newtown did that for Sandy Hook. They have hybrids there.
And that's worked really well.
Yeah.
Right.
Building sidewalks.
Draft it, skipping over Stepney still.
No, no, include Stepney.
Include Stepney.
Include it.
Got it.
Separate, yeah.
Just put it as something separate that's, you know, keeps it.
I think that'd be, I agree with Ryan, it would give an opportunity to actually maybe update some of those buildings down there.
Right, and if I. A couple nights. Of course, we still have the opportunity to modify.
Over everything, yeah.
Commissioner, can I just have an input on that?
What's that?
Can I give my input on that?
Yes.
I live in Stepney area. And I think we're being a little bit naive as far as the historical buildings down there. Um, limiting it, you are neglecting some people that want to improve that area. You have some buildings there, they are not historical, they are an eyesore.
Right.
Okay, and I think that that area should be included. Um, for the betterment, excluding it, you're 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 doing a it's not right.
Okay.
Okay, um, we started out there by doing sidewalks and then it was stopped. Um, I don't agree with the fifteen acres. I mean, that's just an arbitrary figure. And if we allow one applicant dictate fifteen acres, we're allowing that applicant to anybody that's doing a development uh is excluding others from improving and implementing items for the town. Okay, I agree with the this loop of that, one acre should be really thought about.
No, we are going to do that part of the one acre.
Okay.
But when it got into big, big multifamily, that it came to the minimum of fifteen acres, I think for the septic capacity.
You're excluding your competition. I mean, I would love to in business exclude my competitors.
No, I got all that, no, no, I I don't think that was, I think there was a, was a drawback from the beginning about just the multifamily in in its own thing because a lot of people didn't want that in this town. Or certain people didn't want that, that's where that all came from.
I got something about large development.
Right.
We all know from cities, large development don't work.
Right.
After a while, don't work.
Right.
So I just have that in mind.
Right. And so what I'm saying to you is like, it it all came from that. But like you're saying, that you you want to get rid of the whole thing so you can put it anywhere in town.
No, I'm not, I just don't want to say you have to have a minimum fifteen acres. I mean, where do we get fifteen acres?
All right, point of order, I'm sorry.
Yes, Tom.
Tom's not seated, he's not supposed to be talking right now, we're going to get in trouble.
I might not, I might not have a vote, but I have a voice.
Not, unfortunately, not during deliberations.
Well.
Right, it's just that's, I don't want us to get in trouble.
Well, I don't want us to get in trouble, go on a different route that we're not supposed to.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Thank you very much.
Getting back to this five seat commissioners, what we're going to do is um direct staff to.
He's going to have to come, well, no, 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 no.
Hey, bring it back.
Back in front of us.
Yes.
You're going to see a whole new text and then we'll.
You're going to add in this this other stuff too, right?
Yeah, with the with the changes, yeah.
Right.
It's an overhaul.
It's not a whole new, are we going to be going to a public hearing again with the new, it's not a whole new, it's just an edit.
Have a right to add, delete.
Okay, thank you.
As long as you're not substantially changing the whole.
That's, I wanted to go.
That's not a whole doing, the fundamental portions of it is an overlay zone and then the special design. Step two.
Cut that, but we can change stuff.
Yeah.
Change.
Yeah, you have the control, yeah.
Commissioner Lupe.
Yeah, I'm just sitting here thinking, how does this affect the one eleven historic district? Should we?
You're going to hold the line. Sorry.
Which one?
The one eleven, the historic district.
Uh, we're just doing the commercial though.
Right, Rex House, then that's commercial.
Stops, no, it stops.
No, we have to stop it at the, yeah, you can't, you can't include. You can't include all of one eleven.
Yeah.
And Rick, you're going to have to have a cutoff.
Nicole, I'll show you where where.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's going to have to be part of our regulation.
Yes.
Be written in there, yeah.
You have to have that written in there where it stops and begins.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Oh, you'll have, you'll have a map.
Okay.
All right, so then we'll see this back at our next meeting, correct?
Yep.
All right.
Quick question, is there any commercial properties on one ten?
Uh, yes, Vargas is.
No, Vargas is not commercial, it's residential.
No, but it's commercial u occupancy.
I know, but it's it's residential, right?
Yeah.
It's not a commercial piece of property.
Not supposed to be.
I think it's not.
Because we went through that already. It's not conforming, Rick, that was sitting there, that's.
Okay.
So there's, and there's not.
There's no commercial on one ten.
That's recognized as officially commercial.
Okay.
All right, so um we'll hear back next meeting with the text to review. All right, so I'd like to also go over our text amendment R eight twenty twenty one dash oh five. The one that we had um talked about tonight. That's before you, that's our text amendment. That has to do with outdoor storage of materials, signage and supplemental standard regulations. So I believe seated on this are the same five commissioners, correct, Rick, or is Nicole not seated?
Right, I I still need to draw, uh, draw something up on that, a resolution, so I I.
We have to deliver it and tell you which way to go, right?
That's quite a wanted, pulled off on that?
Yeah, let's hold off.
All right, then let's go to Stevenson Lumber from tonight.
Was it, oh, the. The sign regulation?
Yeah, we're told off on that.
Told off on that.
And are we okay with deliberating on um?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Fifteen forty five?
Yes, fifteen forty five, and we're trying to probably get see twenty twenty one dash oh seven, that's the same five that the commissioners that heard the uh hearing tonight. What's um the discussion with Commissioner Lupe? What are your thoughts? Do you like it?
Do I like it? Would I like a different option down there? Yes. Am I concerned with um the buffer of the open sided shed with all the trucks in there? Don't love that, to be honest, because I drive the hill every day and you see right through there. Um, I do think something has to get done down there and I think with the limitations with the septic and with the um land in general, this does fit. Um, I am concerned with overnight, I have to be honest. I think that it is going to be a potential for a twenty four seven opportunity for operation down there. There could be some noise for for residents down there. Um, I just want to make sure the outside of the buildings are improved as part of this, it is, they're very old. And I think if we're going to do this, I would like it to to look, look nicer than it does now. I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay. I believe that, um, well, having the shed open, um, they did make a good point that allows a drive through.
True, it does.
Versus a backup.
It does. So you either see them all the time or you don't hear beeping. And can, can, if they go out the back, I I guess there's room in the back for them to swing around. I didn't look to see if there was a driver, I'm pretty sure there's enough space down there. Yeah, from what I can tell.
For maneuverability, yeah, not an issue.
Commissioner Westland?
Well, we've discussed this particular parcel at length for, it seems like forever at this point. And uh I think we really all wanted something more substantial than this. Um, I feel that the petition is an example of underutilization of this particular parcel. Um, however, I'm not, I'm in favor of of approving it. Um, we did uh hear some verbiage about revitalizing the existing screening and, you know, kind of weeding it out and and hoping that it grows and and allows more coverage. I'd like to see something a little bit more substantial, um, because I know when I drive by, I can see right in there as well. Um, and listen, it's a business coming into town and I don't want to impede progress there. But I'd just like to see some some additional screenage in that in that area that you can see through. Other than that, I'm I'm for approval on it.
Okay, um, if we, a request for any more screening, we'd have to take into account that this, the right of way, the state right of way. How much of that um is in the state right of way?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Ambrosi?
No, I don't, I'm pretty much good with it. I I have my questions I asked and um, I could, I can understand a part about the screening if it comes. I don't believe it's going to become an issue, but if it does, then maybe we can address it at the time when they come in front of us for that other building. Right, because we still because we can screen a little bit more with other buildings, so the buildings up front, so. But you're right.
Yeah, I I like this, I mean, it's a a local owned business that wants to, um, you know, set up shop here in town. Uh, we heard a little bit without too much detail that there's two more projects for the area potentially coming in front of us. Um, for those of you that have been on the board and haven't for the whole time, when we've been talking about this for years, this property. And one of the constant things was business brings business. You start building, other developers are going to come, they've been promising, promising us that as soon as it starts, you'll get, across the street will be building up and you know, it it seems like what they've been saying is is going to start and this seems like a starting point. No, it's not, you know, hotel or go karts or whatever people have talked about in the past going down there. It's not something flashy, but it's it's a business, um, relatively low impact. Um, I I'm for this, I like it, I, you know, I didn't just drive down there. I was looking at Google Earth, going down the road while they were talking, uh, at least during the summer. It is pretty adequately screened, especially if they do fill in those bushes. Yeah, you're still going to see kind of the lumberyard a little bit and and the old buildings. I actually kind of like that they're not necessarily tearing down those old buildings and they are going to use them. Uh, growing up here, living on one eleven, I I've always had Stevenson Lumber as, you know, something I actually liked driving by uh until it slowly fell into what it is now. Um, but it'll be nice to see it cleaned up. Um, I think the cul-de-sac with the big trees is going to help a lot too in the screening. Uh, and I'm excited to see what else uh comes. I'm also really, really happy that they're kind of doubling up on the uh protection with the eliminating um pervious space and uh putting in that uh cyclone uh cleaner, so. I'm very much for this.
Okay, thank you, it sounds like we're leaning towards a draft during approval, Rick.
Right, with the uh the conditions.
Correct. All right, so we'll have that back for us at the next meeting.
Yep.
All right, then moving on to other business, I have two extents, I have two requests for extensions here. Um, this first one is S U B twenty fifteen dash oh one to Victoria Drive. Um, did you review the wording on this, Rick?
Well.
New commissioners.
Yeah, Attorney John Nuff is here to address that.
Oh, all right.
Because the 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 executive order uh covers that now, so that's no, no action is needed, but Mr. Nuff.
Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is John Nuff, I'm attorney with an office at one forty seven Broad Street in Guilford. Nice to see all of you in person. Um, you'll recall that in the spring, you approved a special exception application for a commercial vehicle facility. And even before that, when the snow was flying, you approved a regulation amendment uh to help facilitate that commercial vehicle facility on the property at ten Victoria Drive. Um, we actually started the process, I think, even last September or so, before your regulation committee. So throughout the entire process, we are relying upon the subdivision approval that John Kimball got in twenty fifteen. And uh our subdivision approval, that subdivision approval was about to expire, but the the Connecticut Legislature stepped in and recently passed a new bill that extends our uh subdivision approval as all the subdivision approvals that were passed in the past fourteen years until, I think, um, two thousand twenty nine. So while there's a request for you to extend our subdivision approval, that's now been mooted by the action of the Connecticut Legislature. However, we've been working really closely with Rick ever since we got our approval back in April, um, allowing us to start our site work, what we've been calling phase one. And uh we thought it was appropriate to come back to the commission and we understand that there's been some, you know, questions for an update and we wanted to, uh, you know, uh, be true to our word that we would be here this evening even though we didn't really need the subdivision extension. So um we want to thank Rick and his staff as well as the commission for their, I guess, acknowledgement or consent or understanding of allowing us to do the site work, which is what we've been calling phase one, is just doing, doing site work, moving earth. Because as you, I think you know, as we, when we told you in the spring, our goal is to be, have this facility open and operating by October prior to the, you know, the business of the holiday season, and that's still our goal. And and thanks to Rick and his efforts and sort of modifying the process uh here in town. You know, we think we can make that schedule based upon the ability to do site work as part of phase one. Um, we're hoping to do phase two next, which is the actual installation of utilities and drainage. Um, and I think hopefully we're going to be having a kickoff of phase two um early next week before Rick goes on vacation. Uh, our engineer has been in communication or hopefully in communication with Scott Schusslein uh to help facilitate that meeting next week. And so um uh we appreciate the commission's acknowledgement of that phase two.
John, can I just interrupt you for a second? It's important that the commission understand the previous policy of staff. When a project has been approved, a pre-construction meeting is held. It includes A through Z, everything, including building design, et cetera. A actual building permit is paid for. And as I reported to the commission at our meeting in June, the applicant, and they're going to discuss it in more detail and you asked them to show up tonight, is requesting to do it in phases. They are finishing up the grading work, staff was out there again today. Uh, I'm pleased to report everything is going smoothly. The only issues we had, uh, the weather's been so darn hot and they started the the blasting before the seven o'clock and that's been addressed. It's just like roofers, when you have situations like this, you try to start as soon as possible. But we do have the residential neighborhood in the back, as you know. But other than that, dust control, the driveway apron's been very good and no issues with Swiss Army knife. So uh this commission is aware that we are deviating from past practice, which required everything to be submitted at the pre-construction. Now that they're asking to do it in several phases and John now is going to continue what's after phase one and what are the reasons why they're requesting it? Thank you, John.
Thank you, uh, thanks, Rick, for the background. Um, and and by the way, uh, kudos to Rick for, you know, sort of bringing this new process on board because, you know, if obviously the the goal of the town is to get projects developed and the tax rolls as quickly as possible. That process where you have to get, you know, go through all your construction drawings before you could begin doing any sort of earthwork, you know, it was just a huge delay in terms of a matter of months at least. So uh this has been very, very helpful for us and uh will be helpful for all their activities or other projects uh in Monroe in the future. So phase one was the site work, phase two, we hope to um initiate with a kickoff meeting next week. And that is, as I said, utilities and drainage. And then phase three was going to be uh the construction of the building and the rest of the uh, the rest of the sites. Um, you know, our tenants um has been making changes down the road and with their. You know, our tenant has been making changes down the road and with their facility and it has made a determination that frankly it no longer needs that building. It was, it was not a substantial building, it was 10,000 square feet, included some bathrooms and some offices. And so we are going to be redesigning the site and that have redesigned the site in a way that eliminates that building, moves the bathrooms from that building into the guardhouse so we can still have facilities for drivers, both men and women. And then what we'd like to do is take that space that was going to be occupied by the building and use it to expand the stormwater detention system, the above-ground stormwater detention basin and thereby increasing pervious coverage and also allows us to eliminate some of the underground galleys. You know, as you go, as you imagine, as you go through a process like this and you start going through, you know, finer details in terms of the construction, other opportunities arise in terms of other changes. And I think, you know, some or most of these are appropriate to be done through, you know, these staff meetings. I just want to run down the, there's about five of them. Well, I already discussed the removal of the building, the reduction in the underground chambers and the expansion of the above-ground basin. There is an opportunity to change the retaining wall on the site. This is a really minor one. I guess we originally proposed concrete curbs and we want to change to asphalt. We can eliminate or reduce the size of the septic system because we eliminated the building. And then there is a existing rock elevation, sort of in the southeast corner of the site where we're going to build a retaining wall, there's an opportunity there to eliminate the retaining wall and just create a slope in that area. Obviously, to the extent that there's any drainage changes, those would be reviewed by your tenant, your Scott Schosslein. So there's still being opportunity for, you know, complete overview of our full drainage program, but I think, you know, most of these changes or all these changes are, you know, rather insignificant in the context of, you know, this rather large parcel. We do have Chris Gatenen, our professional engineer from BL Companies. He is joining us virtually, has a site plan available if you want to discuss any of these changes, but as I noted, you know, we're on the agenda this evening for the extension, which we don't need, but, you know, we want to continue the dialogue. We've always, obviously, we're very grateful for this commission's approval, one of the staff's approval, Rick's and his staff's approval, you know, assistance throughout the process and we just want to maintain the dialogue. So my client, Phil DeGennaro's here as well, so we'd be happy to answer any questions or have Chris, you know, discuss some of the changes that I just mentioned here.
All right, since we don't have to act on this tonight, this is informational.
Right.
I'm going to ask the commissioners, do you have any questions? You can start with Commissioner Panich.
Mr. Chairman, before I ask anything, I have, I need some clarification. I'm confused. When I'm not seated, am I allowed to voice my opinion?
Yes, just not during deliberations, which is a separate area, separate section of the agenda.
I have no question.
No questions?
Well, I have questions. You got approved to put a building up. That's what this commission approved.
Understood.
How you're going to take and you're going to change the plan, that's not what we approved.
Understood.
So I would believe that this whole thing would have to come back in front of this commission if you plan on changing the plan.
It's a modification. That's correct.
Right.
Right.
That's another, it's going to be another hearing.
Agree that the elimination of the building would require a new application to amend the site plan.
Right. Because we approved it on the consideration of a building being in there.
Understood.
And now you're removing the building, so I don't know how the application is going to stand without a building.
Understood. We would still like, because our next phase, Phase Two, includes the stormwater system, we would at least like to continue with, you know, operating on the premise that assuming that the building gets, the building removal gets approved, we can expand that basin in that area and reduce the number of underground galleys. Now, obviously, if you deny our application to remove the building, then we'll have to, let's address that at that time, but, you know, as I said, you know, we do want to continue with doing Phase Two in order to meet our deadline of October.
So can I clarify? The applicant is going on the strength of the current approval, which is for the guardhouse and the 10,000 square foot building and the drainage basins, the sidewalk extension, the trail, the walking trail, painting. But they have advised you tonight that they want to modify the plan by eliminating the 10,000 square foot building and do more on-grade drainage basin installation. That requires a modification to the SEP. So that is required. So they want to continue into Phase Two on the strength of the existing approval with the commission understanding that they're going to be submitting a modification to the SEP. So your comfort level has to be there because tomorrow I have to convey to the, to the staff. And now Phase Two is utility and drainage. It's the engineering part. The Phase One was really zoning, you know, the grading, erosion control, you know, that type of thing. So now we're going to get it.
They may be changing that plan too, if you're going to allow them to put more drainage in there, no?
Oh, absolutely.
Right, so why would we start letting them go and put other drainage in there and then all of a sudden go on to put more drainage in? I mean, I don't think that's going to work.
Yeah, John, maybe Chris should address the commission.
I mean, let me preface with, by saying, you know, the area where we would be expanding this basin, I mean, on the overall scope of the site is relatively small, but we would still have the opportunity, if we continue with Phase Two, to be doing all the underground galleys and other utility work and stormwater system, you know, for the, for the rest of the sites, which is still a fair, a fairly substantial amount of work.
Yes, I think we have to be flexible in this case and allow them to continue. I mean, they're going to continue, they're just letting us know what they're doing.
They're being honest up front. They could have just done all this and just not put the building in and then would have come back to us after the fact.
We would have given a CO.
Right. But it would have all been built.
Doesn't make a difference.
And I don't know, do we decide if we do a CO or does?
Would have to be.
No, you have to comply with zoning and Joe Chapman would not sign off.
He couldn't sign off.
So they did at least get to that point. At least now they're coming in front and saying, yeah.
Any questions on this side of the guidance?
Yeah, I don't like this at all.
Me neither.
My comfort level is in the uncomfortable zone. This reduces the amount of tax revenue that comes to the town, which was a consideration when we originally deliberated and decided to go ahead with this. And to me, it changes the overall feel of the project.
My sense would be that it's a 10,000 square foot building that you approved, I mean, which is a relatively tiny building on a 20-something acre site. I understand about the tax revenue, but, you know, the vast majority of the tax revenue was going to be coming from the vans that park there.
Understood.
And not the building itself. I don't think that the building, as compared to the real property itself and to all the hundreds of vans that we park there, really moved the needle that much when it comes to the real property tax revenue. We understand, you know, that position, but I just don't think that that makes an appreciable difference in the value of the site.
I feel like the planning portion of our board here does just that. We're trying to plan and develop in the proper direction. I'm trying to set a, set a bar, which is hopefully going to be followed by other developments in town and hopefully will be contagious. So like I said, putting a parking lot over there would not have been something that I think we would have been all that interested in to begin with, but that's just my thoughts.
Well, and as we've indicated, we'll be back before you with another application to remove the building.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Lou Po.
I agree with Commissioner Westland and Commissioner Ambrosey, I'm not comfortable with this. I'm not comfortable moving into Phase Two, which starts doing the engineering and all that work when you are now changing that and the footprint is different. So I'm not really comfortable until we get a modification back in front of us that we are comfortable with what they want to do.
Well, the drainage and utilities that we'd be installing would be identical across the entirety of the site, but for that area where the building was to be located. And that's really all we're asking to do.
No further questions?
Well, Rick.
So you're in front of us to ask us to make a decision to allow them to go on when they don't plan on following the plan?
I don't think, are we making a decision right now?
We're making, we're making, right, do you want us, then why would you bring them in front of us?
Oh, no, absolutely. This is a significant deviation, which I explain on how we do pre-construction meetings. The applicant was very pleased with the commission supporting the earthwork. The site needed to be graded accordingly, there was a little blasting that was needed. Now we're getting into the drainage, we're getting into the design work now. Your comfort level has to be good here.
Well, my comfort level's not real good at the moment because we agreed to.
I understand that.
They brought it in front of us, so my comfort level is not comfortable at all because basically you come in with a plan and now you're getting through, we let you start with the excavation part of it and then you come in front of us and you ask us to change the plan. That's not what the intent of this commission was when we approved that site.
What we're asking to do in Phase Two is what you approved as part of our site plan. So, I mean, so that's consistent.
But usually, like he says, we get a building permit, we get all this stuff and at least we know we have everything. Right now, we start doing step after step and we didn't mind working with you because he asked us about going ahead and doing that without getting this, and then all of a sudden you throw this part onto us. And basically, what it is, is did you ever really intend to put a building up or did you not really intend to put a building? What I'm just saying to you is that's the way it looks to this commission.
Right, understood.
And so, and that's something that this commission, I don't, personally, I don't want that brought back in front of me. Once we agree to something, we work hard to get this approved for the company and for that project. And like I said, this goes with the land, doesn't go with anything else because that land could be sold afterwards and you could have a different tenant or you can have a different person there. You know, so basically that's what this commission approves.
We did not want to go through the charade of submitting a building permit application and started the process and then coming to you at the end and saying, no, we don't want to build this building anymore, just not building the building. I mean, we're, as I said, we have come before you this evening, even though we don't need the extension on the subdivision approval, Rick asked us to come here and be forthright with you, which we always would be, keep the commission informed, express our appreciation for working with us in terms of, you know, doing the Phase One work. We want to do the Phase Two work, which is only what you have already approved as part of the original approval in terms of the drainage and the utilities. And then we will come back before you and show you the plan without the building and the expansion of the detention basin.
All right, so what potential issues do we have here, Rick?
We may not approve.
You're going to throw the whole project out because they're not putting a small building in?
Well, Mike, it's serious.
That's the Mike. That's the potential problem, is they're going to go and do this and then come in front of us and.
Well, that's the protect, what, Mike.
I mean, realistically.
Well, realistically.
Or you just want to?
I don't, no, I'm not saying, I'm not the only one saying it. I'm not the only thing, Rob's saying it, she's saying, and I'm sure Bruna would have an issue with it, and I'm sure Brian's not real comfortable with it, I don't know how comfortable you're with it, but the thing is, is that now you get another application that comes in front of here and somebody says, okay, I'm going to do this and you allow them to do this and all of a sudden they say, well, you know what, I don't want to do that anymore. And you let that building go away and so you're setting something here that we approved.
Right, but we're allowing.
And I don't think this is a time that we should be talking about it anyway.
We're allowing the staff to make these decisions.
We're allowing the staff, we, we, we try to make the process easier in this time, okay? And that's what we've done, is try to make it easier. But sometimes when we make it too easy, it gets way out of control. Okay, because we have other issues that are getting out of control already and we're going to discuss that tonight, I hope. But it's, the thing is, is this commission is here to make decisions and we make hard decisions for other people that they don't like. And but they go and they agree with it and they do it. But then when you, when you start a project and you come back in front of us and you want to remove the building, I mean, this is not like a minor modification. This is something that to remove in the whole building.
There's two buildings on the property. You're removing one.
The front, the guardhouse.
The front, now, now it's going to have bathrooms.
How big is it?
It's going to come in.
Will it be any larger? Is the guardhouse going to be expanded at all?
I would, I would assume so for restrooms unless.
Yeah, I mean.
It sits on a toilet the whole time.
I mean, I mean, I mean, the building removal itself, as we have acknowledged, has to come back before you and needs your approval. And I understand Commissioner Ambrosey's, you know, concern that you set a precedent or at least telegraph to the world that someone can come back and make a fundamental change to, on an important component to a project. You know, you propose a beautiful brick facade and then, gee, I come back and I want to do heathers. I don't even, I don't think that this, this, the removal of this building even rises to that level. Again, it's a 20-something acre site, it's a 10,000 square foot building. I don't know what that percentage is, but it's really mid-scale. The determination was made that there's just simply no use for the building. So we could throw up a building, it wasn't the Taj Mahal, it wasn't even close to Taj Mahal, it was, it was a very simple building and it would have been sitting empty except perhaps for two bathrooms. It just seems, you know, frankly silly to construct a building that has absolutely no purpose whatsoever. We're going to come back before you on the building, we're sort of informing you and because we want to continue the dialogue in a cooperative manner, that we want to continue doing the utility and drainage work that was part of the approval, that we're going to come back and to amend just with regard to the building and then so we can continue on and get this, get the vans there and get it on the tax rolls. If you want to have a further discussion about the building, we can certainly do that, you know, once we submit an application.
Okay, well, we've been informed, thank you. And where do we go from here, Rick?
I have the difficulty of discussing this now with my staff because there is absolute concern by this commission.
My, my concern.
And I am not going to allow anything to jeopardize the relationship with staff and the commission, to inform. So I have to sort this out tomorrow. And I'll be, I'll be talking to you, Mr. Chairman, after I talk to the applicant and staff.
So I just have one more comment. So to be honest and to be transparent, I feel as though we just approved this a few months ago. What's suddenly changed, we're now, we don't need the building at all. And I kind of feel as though if we had been originally approached for this commercial parking, I don't know that we would have approved that. So now I just kind of feel that the building was brought before us to get in there and then now, once, now that we approved the parking.
No, I, I.
That's, that's my honest opinion.
No, no, I understand the point. We're all here for that special exception application and the hearing. I mean, candidly, I don't recall much discussion about the building itself. I mean, we certainly acknowledge that this is going to be a building, but the vast majority had to do with all the other components of the project. Just because so little was taking place there or in terms of activity, required very little in the way of parking. And as I noted, it's not something that can be seen through the road, it adds very little if anything to the tax rolls. It's, you know, it was, it was supposed to be a facility that helped, you know, with the operations of the, of the site and it was determined that it simply wasn't needed. But I don't think it was a fundamental component to the commission's approval. I, I, I would respectfully disagree, I think, I think that, we can, you don't have crystal balls, I can't read your minds, but I think remembering the tenor, the conversations, which was always very cooperative every time we were before you, that I think it would have been approved without the building.
What was the purpose of the building to begin with?
It was, it was for offices for, you know, staff to, you know, oversee the operations. And frankly, it's taking place on the street.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Nope. Tom, Rick?
Yeah, I have a comment. I understand all the commissions are being tactful on preserving our thing, but we're not looking from the point of view of the developer. He's telling us, he's pleading with us, telling us. He's telling us, he's pleading with us, telling us that he's not, he doesn't want to put up a building. We already have problems in Monroe, other developers that have empty buildings. So we should be a little bit.
Understanding.
Yeah, understanding, okay? So I understand where he's coming from. All I want to ask him is, how much time do you need to build this building? Or are you just putting it over altogether?
So, so the idea, if we eliminate the building, we would expand the detention basin in that area, so.
What are you gonna do with the building?
They're removing it. They don't want to put it up at all.
Just the guardhouse.
Not at all.
No.
No. The structure, the guardhouse.
Well, did you have any idea before when you were putting it up that you might not, might not need this building?
No, I mean, as you can imagine, you know, these types of facilities are still in their infancy. You know, and, and constantly evaluating how to optimize these types of facilities. Uh, both, both this one as well as the one down the street. And while we wanted to make sure that we, you know, if, if, if a building were needed for offices and for bathrooms and for the facility itself, we wanted to make sure that we had a building on our plan and approved. And subsequent to that, the determination was made that all those operational, um, you know, decisions and personnel are gonna be located down the street, so that the building simply wasn't necessary. So that's, that's the sole reason why we're eliminating the building.
I understand and feel for you, but you gotta understand our position that if we did that every single time somebody comes up, so.
And, and, and as I said, I'm sympathetic, and I understand. I've been before lots of commissions and watching applicants, you know, um, make changes, whether it was landscaping or architecture or uh, materials that a commission disliked. I just think that in the overall context of this project, on this site of twenty-some acres that sits below Route 25, the elimination of a relative postage stamp building that no one ever would have seen, that would never move the needle on your, on your tax rolls, is just less than inconsequential.
You have your engineer online?
Yeah.
Maybe you could just show us the relative size of the building.
We already noticed.
Hey Chris, can you hear us?
Well, it, it seems like everyone really wants this building. I'd like to just see the building again.
Hi, everyone, yeah, I'm, uh, this is Chris Gaggen for the Record BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway. I guess this isn't a public hearing, that's just a habit there. Um, if uh, if uh, someone would allow me to share the screen, I can um, I can show, uh, show what was approved and a, a sketch of what we're anticipating.
Donna's still here, yeah. Donna will be doing that. Donna?
Oh, I see it. You folks see that?
It's not a public hearing.
Aren't they the ones that need to see the building?
Do you want to take five minutes?
Why, I mean, are they gonna want?
I feel like they're gonna want to see the. Five minutes, please. Thank you.
Hey Chris, we're taking a recess. You can too.
Yes. Okay.
Alright, we'll pack it session.
Alright, so are we bashing Chris?
Chris left us.
No, we did tell him five minutes.
Oh, sorry?
We did tell him a five-minute recess, right?
Right.
There he is.
I'm here, I wouldn't leave you guys.
Alright. Okay, so Chris, you're gonna throw up the side mic. Thank you. So Chris, remind us of the total acreage of the site.
Twenty-four seventy-five.
Okay.
And can you show us where the buildings are?
This is the building. And this is the guard shack. Right there.
Okay.
And will that be upgraded to a guard house? Is it gonna get a little bigger when you move bathrooms in or no?
Yeah, the, this program, they have numerous types of um, guard, uh, I guess shack is somewhat of an inappropriate term. They have numerous types of guard houses, um, which, um, you know, mostly based on the um, security levels needed at every site. However, um, because we are uh, being requested to provide the, uh, the permanent bathrooms here, this uh, this guard house will be sized to have um, to have uh, the bathrooms in it. They have a bunch of prototypes and um, that this will have the, the appropriate bathrooms.
So, so, so Chris, if I'm doing my math right, if I just literally do that benefit calculator, twenty-some acres, forty-three thousand something square feet per acre. Total site is about nine hundred thousand square feet?
Uh, one million seventy-eight thousand square feet.
Alright, so what percentage of the site is the ten thousand square foot building?
It sounds like one to me.
Yeah. Yep.
So, was there really a danger that we wouldn't approve this if that building wasn't there? I mean, that's, I think, part of the question here. Is it a minor change or is it a major change? Are we really looking for this building here?
Well, Mike, the elimination is, is a modification of the S U B.
Which they're gonna come back.
Yeah, they have, that was for.
That's enough of that. But do we need to hold them up at this point? Is the question tonight.
I mean, there's, there is clearly acres and acres and acres of utility and drainage work to do. So, all we want to do is continue doing that work in the vast majority of the site that isn't implicated in any way by the building. And listen, we'll go back and talk to our tenant and see if there's a way that they can make use of the building, maybe, maybe this uh, reduced size building. And then, you know, we'll communicate with Rick in terms of what our plans are. But we do really want to go forward with the rest of the site, which everything you approved before, and then make a determination on the building.
We'd like to see in business for this holiday season, um, because as we know, we've had other tenants in this area that didn't want to wait for another ruling and left. Alright, so I think, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Alright, so then, Rick, you got your work to do. And you missed enough.
Okay, thank you very much. Chris, thank you. You can go pick up your daughter now. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a, an actual request for an extension, I believe. On under other business ten, S U B twenty-twenty-one dash oh one, file number twenty-twelve sixty-seven C. Type fifteen and five twenty-nine, Chris Palm wrote, I have a letter for the request of a ninety-day extension. Uh, the letter is to us, um, requesting a ninety-day extension of application for subdivision. This is the um, applicant of the United Methodist Church of Monroe. Uh, they are informed that they have the right to request a ninety-day extension. If they're submitting final plans, um, they're requesting this in order to bring on their new pastor, who'll be starting in July. Um, and they want to have a couple of other indoor church meetings at the same time. So I have a request, um, now do we, I don't know, remember, do we vote on this?
Yeah, we need a motion in a second to accept it, to accept the um, ninety-day extension from church.
Make a motion to accept the extension. S U B dash two zero two one dash zero one, five oh one two six seven C.
I have a motion, I need a second.
A second motion?
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'll call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Rosie, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Lupo, yes.
And the um, extension passes. Number eleven, the P R C D, we have done already, the regulation work review, um, subcommittee. Uh, we do have a correspondence from the Conservation Commission requesting a meeting with us in the subcommittee.
Right, and Mr. Chairman, I'm asking either the week of the nineteenth, when I get back, or the following week. Keep in mind, the nineteenth is the meeting, we're gonna have a meeting July twenty-second. Or you could do the following week, which is the twenty-sixth. I would recommend the twenty-sixth because I have a lot of preparation when I come back.
What do you want to do, the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, that week, you know, Monday, Tuesday, whatever works for you.
Monday, the twenty-sixth?
Make Monday slinging. Rob?
Alright with me.
Rob?
Yeah, I can do that.
Five thirty?
Yeah, twenty-sixth. Sure.
Like twenty-sixth, five thirty. Good with that.
That'll be with the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have some minor stuff too.
Five thirty, is that right?
Yeah.
I would go on to commission reports. I do not have a chairman's report. Uh, let's go to the commissioners. Do we have any commissioner reports tonight? Moving back from there.
Uh, I would like to ask that subcommittee consider uh, reevaluating the current zoning stances on sales, growth and distribution of marijuana in the town of Monroe. The state has approved some things that have made it very difficult regardless from Monroe to do anything. But I think going forward, businesses and farmers shouldn't have their hands tied by our zoning laws and at least be subject to whatever the state uh, has regulated. Uh, maybe something to consider, and I'd like that.
Put that on the agenda.
Consider bringing it to a public vote.
Right, um.
Subcommittee agenda.
The main core issue is the federal statutes prohibit it. Most towns rely on the federal statutes. I just read that Congress, for the next session, is dealing with that. Because there's at least twenty states that now have allowed it, and it's growing. So you got that conflict with the federal statutes.
Well, we're not, we don't have the, well, the state and the federal conflict is there, yes.
Yeah, but most land, most communities are relying on the federal statute prohibition.
If they want to prohibit. But if they want. State statute has a fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Population prohibition on sales, I believe.
Um, right, the, your towns with fifty thousand or more, right?
You have to have fifty thousand or more in order to allow sales, correct?
I, I think that's my understanding.
I think Ryan's talking about possible cultivation terms.
And I know specifically, it's listed in our zoning laws as something not allowed.
It's prohibited.
I'd like the subcommittee to look and just see if it is something that could be considered being struck. Again, I'm totally aware that whoever does move forward with that is gonna have a lot of other hoops to jump through and barriers. But I just don't think that our commission should be one of those.
Alright, we'll put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll have uh, further discussion on interior lots.
Interior lots, yeah.
We want to move forward with that.
And we should probably also put on um, accessory, freestanding accessory.
Yeah.
Which is another state mandate, apparently.
Okay.
And the other commissioner reports.
What's with this? Why do we have a bridge thing in front of us?
I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
Land use staff report.
Okay, starting with C B A, the July sixth meeting has been canceled. There, this F Y I, there will be a August meeting because uh, there will be a uh, uh, application protesting a cease and desist order for pre-existing non-conforming commercial business in a residential zone. Nothing on the siding council, regulations subcommittee, we haven't met. And we are meeting July twenty-sixth. Uh, zoning enforcement program, the one twenty-five Garda Road and the forty-five Pepper Street, those are both owned by Grassall Construction, and we are continuing to work with them. Uh, as I indicated last time, Grassall wants to uh, uh, prepare a subdivision application for the Garda Road and sell lots there. Uh, anti-blight enforcement, uh, three thirty-seven Monroe Turnpike. They are now going to the historic district, this building is more than sixty years of age. Uh, I've been told that a waiver will be granted, so they have to go through a public hearing. Uh, has everyone seen it? The vegetation's been removed.
Yeah.
The building's coming down, it's gonna be removed. There are a lot of steps because of lead and asbestos, so you gotta do the assessment. You have the underground tanks, they gotta be removed, and then we have the historic commission. Also, um, two fifty-five Monroe Turnpike, the owner has agreed to maintain vegetation around the unoccupied dwelling. The dwelling, unlike uh, three thirty-seven Monroe Turnpike, is sound. Uh, some, some uh, windows and doors have to be secured. Uh, we, we almost received an application for redevelopment there, but that fell through. But the owner has agreed to, to clean up the vegetation. Thirty-nine Ridgedale Road, the zoning officer has issued a notice of violation uh, to the property owner. This involves high grass. It is covered under uh, the blight issue. We try to work with them, or at least try to get a neighbor to cut it, you know, sometimes, I mean, there's a high population of elderly people in town, as we know. Or some people are just incapable of doing it. So we, we try to work with them, but when the grass gets a couple feet, you know, we do have to deal with it. Uh, Valsey's Restaurant, uh, we did approve that. That is a permanent uh, uh, outdoor seating arrangement. The particulars are, you're going to have a masonry wall. You are going to have a freestanding chimney with a gas insert. You are going to have a uh, roof over, which is uh, a non-structure roof. Uh, the sign has been removed. Uh, just one parking space has been eliminated. The commission did eliminate the twenty percent maximum, this is like twenty-five percent. The old regulation, you shall not provide more than, you cannot allow more than twenty percent of the current existing indoor floor area for outdoor seating. So this is uh, a little bit more, it's twenty-five percent. That's why I asked the commission to eliminate that twenty percent. Uh, staff has been monitoring it. Most of all the applications received are seasonal. They, they will come down. This one is gonna be. Uh, the overall circulation is an issue. The overall onsite parking issue, issue, they do comply. Uh, one of the tenants was uh, displeased, but is waiting to see how things uh, unfold at the site, so we'll, we'll be monitoring it. They have, they have begun, so I asked the commission members to go up there and look at it, you know, where the footings are gonna go in, because it is gonna be a permanent arrangement. This is the only one that we know of for the most part. Uh, but I will continue to provide the commission with uh, updates on the minor site plan.
Where, where are they gonna put the sign that, that came down? Is that gonna go on the new structure?
It's gonna be still on the facade, moved over to the left.
Okay, but on the old?
It's on the, yeah, it's on the face.
Got it. But Rick, is that gonna be a four-season kind of thing over?
Yes.
Okay, I.
Well, there's two parts to it. There's the part that has.
I have that.
The roof, and the open part will be seasonal, but uh, it'll have a heater in there.
Yeah, but that's gonna, that's gonna increase their seating. There's no doubt in my mind.
Oh, yeah, it does, and.
It does, but they're only, they're only keeping the amount of seating that they had there to meet the septic capacity.
And, and the.
Haven't changed that.
And the sanitarian has approved it.
I understand that, because they use the same calculation that they had before.
Oh, no, there's an increase, Lee, and you're absolutely right, and the sanitarian.
But they didn't, they didn't do that.
No, the town sanitarian, I'll, I'll, I'll double check on that, because he has the meetings with us.
No, but they were approved for a certain amount of seating. I know that.
Absolutely, yeah.
But before, and now they're. And now they're adding aside, and they're going to increase. They're saying they're not going to increase, but they're going to increase. There's no doubt that they're not going to.
But that's a valid question, let me get the numbers on it.
And what's going to happen with...
Because we're all subject here in town, so, you know.
And the other thing...
They have public water there, so that's not it.
What's going to happen with the four spaces across? They're going to remove the four spaces now?
No, those...
No way they're going to get that truck out of there with that dumpster.
I...
I'll tell you that right now, there is no way. And you're going to go into some handicap parking now, that's going to turn into be a safety issue.
Yeah, well, there are...
That was really minor in an aspect of what they're doing over there. It's a little bit more major than what's minor.
No, you're absolutely right, and that's why I've met, you know, all of staff met out there with the owner and the fire marshal. And the truck actually came that day, but obviously the new work didn't begin. And they were able to slowly go between it, it's tight. Just like McDonald's is going to be tight when the delivery trucks go around it.
Is there any possibility, you can get around, I know it's cluttered and there's a lot back there.
Oh, that's an issue.
Is there any possibility of uncluttering it and being able to drive?
That is a condition of approval.
Okay.
There are two vans back there.
Yeah, they're trucks.
There's no other access out of there but that one way in, right?
Yeah, that's right, go in, there's no other way out. Garbage truck has to go in and maneuver, they come at 5:30. So, you know, the deliveries come before cars are parked there. The garbage truck has to maneuver, turn around, back in, pick it up and do it, and then head out. But the overall circulation, as Rob indicated, has got to be open, and I told that to the owner. That's a fire marshal issue, and it's got to be respected.
If he puts the trucks in line instead of next to each other, there may be a way to get through.
Oh, there is a way to get through, but they got to make it more tight. There's metro wetlands in the back, I didn't know that. Has anyone seen in the back there?
It's water, right?
That's major, I mean, that's acres.
Rick, I think something like that should came in front of this commission. I don't think that was minor in any aspect.
All right. You know what's good?
The state has required that.
Leanne, we're going to put that in the Subcommittee. We're going to put that in the Subcommittee.
No, I understand the regulation that says outdoor dining should not be implemented in any way, including, I believe, they don't want a public hearings for that. That has to be done administratively because of COVID.
No, but I understand Leanne's concern.
I'm saying, what I'm saying is, in any aspect, this wasn't like what the intent of what we thought of outdoor dining. This turned into would be a major project. This is like, you know, there's indoors...
It's permanent.
And I don't think that was the intent of the state either for the outdoor dining. Right, so I'm saying...
We'll bring it up on the 26th because I want the comfort level to be here. All the other ones are minor, you know, they're seasonal.
Yeah, as I've seen...
As we anticipated.
It's going to come down, and there's no way they're going to be up all winter.
Yeah.
They rent the actual stuff, yeah, they were telling me about that.
Vazey's clients loved it when it went outside.
No, I understand that, and it's not going to have an issue with it, I really don't.
No, but it's a tight location.
Tight there, it's real tight.
No denying that, it's just like the McDonald's.
And it worked?
Yes, we got to make sure. So we'll bring that up, we'll review that, so the comfort level's safe. The next P&amp;Z meeting was scheduled for July 15th. I have a conflict because of my vacation, we rescheduled that to July 22nd. That has since been canceled, and notification is going on for the special meeting for July 22nd. And then we only have one meeting in August, remember that, okay?
First.
That is correct. And no new single-family dwellings since the last reporting. And what I need to bring up tonight is the Mountain Laurel Estates subdivision that was approved over 10 years ago wants to move forward.
That's Cottage Street?
That is correct. The area where the small streets are, the small lots. The developer has met with staff to replace the precast culverts, and there's two of them, with the corrugated, which you have literature in front of you. This is something that the town engineer and the Public Works Director has never supported in the past because of the longevity of it. This is a work in progress. It ultimately has to come back before the wetlands because they made that a condition of approval and the planning and zoning. This is, will become part of the town's infrastructure.
Right, it's a new...
So we need, a lot of thought has to go into this. So you will be hearing from the town engineer and the Public Works Director their thoughts on this. Obviously, the applicant doesn't want to go against, up against two recommendations that are not supportive of it. Because obviously, this commission is going to rely on the recommendations of staff. I assume you're going to put a lot of emphasis on that.
Are they going to... So when they come in front of us, Public Works and the engineer will be here?
Yeah, right now, they're doing their due diligence, they're talking to their peers on this corrugated type, the, you know, the pros and cons, the longevity of it, and if it makes sense for the town of Monroe to accept it.
Rick, the state has approved this, I don't know if you know that?
Yes, they have.
There is one bridge in Newtown on 30 Hill, whatever, they already implemented.
Yes, it should be noted that this is being used more because the techniques of installing it have changed dramatically. They put membranes over it, they coat it, but it's still corrugated steel. And you know what happens with corrugated steel?
But it's a lining, though, it's not structural, right?
No.
It's a lining.
Basically a form.
It stops the water.
Yeah.
There's no floor to this, it's going over wetlands. It's keyed in to footings, you know, like when you do a footing and you have that key, it fits into that key, it's then cemented in, but it's corrugated metal. And the town has to accept it as part of the permanent infrastructure.
So it acts as a form?
Yeah. So there is clearly a cost savings for the developer. It's a tough site, it'd be a lot easier doing this than bringing in a bigger crane.
And this, there is a large open space component to this project.
Yeah, that goes to the town.
Sixty-five acres, I think we need to take another look at that. That was approved before any of us wanted.
I think, I think the engineering and the Director of Public Works will be around for the 26th to talk to you. This is significant because it's, you know, it's a major component of the new road infrastructure going in. You know, it's a total deviation from what towns have done in the past. But as Dominic said, the state is using it, it's a product that the state's using.
Besides aesthetics, is there any drawback?
It's the longevity of it. Precast lasts longer, but they're saying it can last...
What is the lifespan?
That's what we're working on. They would, at our staff meeting, they did not give us a definitive timeframe.
That's important.
How easy is it to replace?
What's that?
How easy is it to replace?
Oh, it's a lot easier, easier to assemble. But that's not the issue, Ryan, it's the longevity of it, the cost benefit.
Okay, so are you going to be talking to them again?
Yeah.
Applicant, so can you look at the open space provision also? Because it's pretty vague.
Yeah.
If I recall, it's very vague. It needed to be, like, to be deeded to the town. All right?
Okay, that's it.
Anything else? That's it? All right, then the Chair will extend a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second all, okay? Say aye.
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 All right, Sarah, good night, Donna.
Good night, guys.
Have a happy fourth.